Um, seven P M. Everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance. Okay. You get the driveway subdivision, right?
Huh?
Driveway subdivision, you're, you're, yeah, yeah. Uh. So you've been through enough hoops, I'm sure.
Yeah, I got the, the final maps.
Yeah, so I'm thinking all we gotta do is.
And the myler.
You do resolution two?
We have a resolution tonight, I think. Um, it's the last thing in the case packet. I think they have the legal packet to be the first time that we needed one of them.
But you, but you, you still want to ship them, right? Or they're the same.
Well, I'm gonna need him to stamp them.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we, I think we.
Oh, they're not stamped by the surveyor now, that?
Oh, yeah.
No, survey yes, but not the.
But we just, we just got stamped on top.
Yeah, stamped and signed, yeah.
But uh, how many pages?
As many.
Well, what, whatever you have there.
Everything you have will be stamped.
Right?
That way we can, I'll, I name this one and three paper copies and then the rest can be yours.
Okay.
Okay. A little last word. I think he's telling me one or two to go to the county.
Two go to the county, I keep one of my office stuff, but.
Anybody wanna look at the final map before we go, or? Am I guessing?
No.
Then we beat this to death kind of like.
And then when the new personal number is done, it comes back.
Nothing is changed, just now it shows like the full big ma- big lot. Cause before it was like cut here, now it shows the back lot. That's the only difference. This was what was the two percent.
Yeah, well, everybody's gonna, I'll read this resolution. If you can stamp the map, it can be done as, uh. How do you make out with Kaksaki?
Yeah, now it's Kaksaki, but they first, they said that now, I was there last week, they said that now I have to actually like purchase the newly subdivided lot and like the back lot, and then I go to them for the consolidation.
I talked to Patty today.
Yeah, she asked me for the, she asked me for the environmental.
Yep, I sent her over this morning.
Something else.
Uh, the county comments.
Yep.
It's all taken care of.
Okay.
Remember when things were simple?
Just the year.
This generated enough paperwork to fill them.
Yeah.
Let's get this out of our hair. Whereas James Bone, wishing to complete a minor subdivision property on Sheldon Park Road, taxman at number four zero dash zero zero dash three dash two nine, had their authorized agent, Slavik, Tisliv, submit a minor subdivision application at the May eighth, twenty twenty five planning board meeting. Whereas the subdivision did not meet the minimum requirements in acreage or road frontage in a rural agricultural zone, the planning board denied the application, and the application referred to the zoning board of appeals or area variance consideration. Whereas the short governmental assessment form was reviewed at the June fourth, twenty twenty five zoning board of appeals meeting, the negative declaration given for the purpose of secret. And whereas a required M two thirty nine referral was submitted to the Green County planning board June eleventh, twenty twenty five, to which response was local decision with comment. Whereas a required public hearing had been duly noticed in all due time, June was held on the application on August seventh, twenty twenty five, members of public offering comment, therefore be it resolved that the Bone-Tisliv minor subdivision be approved at following conditions. That lots one and two shall have no further subdivisions. That lot two of the subdivisions is hereby deemed a non buildable lot in this covenant shall run with the land. That lot two shall be consolidated parcel number four zero dash zero zero dash eight dash two in the town Kaksaki, the lot line adjustment. And that such lot line adjustment shall be submitted to the town Kaksaki planning board within six months of the date of this resolution.
Okay, motion to accept the resolution for the Bone-Tisliv minor subdivision.
Second.
Second by Josh, okay.
Hello, hey, we should open our final champagne.
Finally, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now please, oh.
Did we vote?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do, I, we need to actually go.
What?
Wait here, uh, everybody did favor.
All right, all right. Motion carries. Second, I gotta have myself.
Oh, that, that was a big one. Okay.
We're just trying to get to that.
And look at the little box they put for you, lobby.
It says perfect size.
And Patty not sent her for the resolution for the town line. He should be all set with us.
Who did the survey?
Uh, Fratores and Corliffe and Siderses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're my.
The maps look pretty nice, right?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
It's just ten grand.
Okay, yeah.
Ten thousand, available.
Is that all?
Yeah, that's that.
Oh, my God, and all the time?
Yep.
That's awful.
Yeah, the, the worst part was to find the town line. Cause it was, it's, it's like four months of work, it was nowhere. Like no, no money was.
So did they search it out that, that?
Yeah, they, they found one at the highway and then another one somewhere like else. And then they just find the third one and combine it and like did the search.
It's scary to get your town line.
Oh, yeah.
Everything's scary in that day.
We go find the town line.
Yeah, they said that now like if you need to, if you live at the home, where it is. But we'll keep that in mind, yeah.
Yeah.
Who wants to do that? In New York State, we don't keep the records necessary to do that.
It'll be too simple.
It's just simple. I said this one is good, right?
No.
That's your home?
You're gonna go back, you know?
But that has to pay for that.
Yeah, that has to drop.
Yeah, let that, let that stay for a while, sometime takes a little while on a process.
This one goes to the county and two paper ones, this goes to the county.
So when I give it, so when I give it to the county, they're gonna assign an, uh, a tax.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
I takes a couple weeks and it'll come back to us and we assess all of it.
Definitely by my heart.
I know.
To the county, to four eleven me, or not four eleven, but Main Street Catsville.
Yeah, oh, ah, okay.
Um, that's where they.
And there is an application to give a tax in you, or?
No, you just go in there with your maps and I think the fee is ten dollars or something to drop the maps off.
But.
To the, to the county clerk.
How there no warning?
The county clerk will tell you. This is all, all you need from us is the maps stamped and signed.
So now it's county.
Now you just bring to the county and.
No boards over there?
Huh?
No boards over there?
Oh, there's a board, but we've already done that, thank you. We already did that.
They won't want ten grand from you, we can guarantee you that.
No, they just, it's for map filing only, you should be okay.
And they're very clever.
Uh, yeah, Amy Cat is the clerk over there and she'll help it. Yeah, and she's got two good experiences. Yes.
My suit.
Oh. Um, and then you have like, I think it's sixty days to file these, but I'm sure you'll be down there.
Okay.
Before that.
So the procedure, I vote to the county, I ask them to assign the tax, you want to keep close? Then I vote to.
Just one copy we need for us?
One for me, yeah.
These are all yours, that should be fine, now you roll them all together.
Okay, and they're, they're.
Oh, what did I get to, I'm sorry.
They're big slums, you got the biggest tax.
And my, my, my surveyors, they said like, for them, for them it doesn't matter like which type of thing, I'm like, okay, let's get the biggest one in here.
Do you wanna wrap that around us or can? That way you call one side.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure seeing you for a year.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at the range of resolution.
We started it was.
It's snow and cold outside, now it's nice and warm.
Definitely.
All right, well, good luck, please.
Perfect, thanks, bud.
I'll send you the resolution on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Got it?
Okay, Francis.
Smiling, too.
Francis?
Yeah.
You have the lot line adjustment application, is it?
Yeah, my name's Kevin Rounds, I'm here for Fran.
I've seen you, Kevin.
How are you?
Oh, good.
I see your, I see your, um, you're checking everything now, you're the boss out here? You guys gonna check this?
I'm gonna have to take care of the guy, you know?
Oh, you know. You probably more experienced at it, huh? Does anybody wanna copy it? I got, uh, five copies, two mylers, three papers. And of course, you know, I don't know if you guys have any, um, PDF files in your laptops that you saw this week?
Yeah, I'm looking at them now.
All right, did we have one right here?
Sure.
Fran's got five, uh, four contiguous lots. And these are all inside.
For sure, for sure.
Okay. There's no, um, more than one outline. The joining line. Okay. Everybody's looking. I wanna point out firstly, the tax map in the area is incorrect, so I didn't give you a copy of that, it's gonna confuse you, okay? So I basically have, uh, on this map, overview of proposed lot adjustments. This is basically the left version of the tax map is the existing tax map in the area, okay? This is where the lots are. And, um, there's a lot that's labeled as seven dash one dash eleven. That was created in nineteen seventy-two, one point one five acre lot, it's never been developed. It's a big, it's a big rock, uh. Yeah.
To, to the. Oh, that's one here, that's the one along the road.
What we propose to do here, because this is a dead lot for fifty years here, okay? We wanna flop this line to the north on, on, on adjoining properties that Fran has. Because it's a perfect fit to make this lot come alive again. So we're basically just flopping a line to the north on his existing.
Did that lot have, looks like it had road frontage enough, it did?
Yes, that lot's got road frontage on, on Old State, so the lower lot has access right up the road there.
So the only, you're only moving one line, I, and flopping it up, that's nothing, no other line is moving?
Uh, actually, uh, to clean the lines, to clean the, um, the property lines around the curve of, of the access, I did a little bit of, uh, adjustment there. You know, to make the road, uh.
The line follows the road now?
Yeah, well, yeah, to make, yeah, to make that, make the access work right there.
The road doesn't, is not a right, it's not gonna be a right of way and after that, or no, no, no where he is.
Oh, it's always been a right of way, thirty foot right away.
That's why it's not gonna be that after, cause it's not gonna be on that lot.
Oh, yes, the thirty, the thirty feet's all the way up to the top.
Well, please.
I'm just saying, does the easement go away after you make this adjustment?
No. Lot seven one twenty owns the easement, that's the last, that's the last lot on top of the hill, yeah. So that's Fran's lot.
This.
He owns more, actually, that's where he lives. And we have a house on, uh, one dash nineteen, seven dash one nineteen.
Is that, wait a second, so that's a landlocked lot?
That's a lot that's, that's active and good and.
But it's landlocked, so that's what the easement's for, is that piece?
That's, that's, that's already. Yeah, that's already been, uh, that's already a record, that easement.
No, I'm just asking because of the, the lines you're moving.
It always did service that, and that doesn't change.
For one lot, you get two lots that are less than two acres.
You've got it labeled wrong on your application, you have it down as commercial, and it's in the RA district as of, uh, two thousand sixteen.
Well, we have point two lot, point two acre lots everywhere, you're aware.
You see, there's the state.
Yeah.
This is Hill State Road.
Yeah.
So industrial, commercial, this is RA. And all your properties are in RA. And there's a two lot random requirement, but also with a lot line adjustment, you can't do more than one acre. And that's also in the code book as well.
Well, this is, this is, this really works. In the ground, we have a grade break here coming up the hill. And this lot is about six, it says six nine.
You wanna take vacant land, move it over top of a, a home, your maps don't show any of the properties, the structures that are here.
Yes.
And they're supposed to be represented on the map.
There's no structure on this lot.
On what lot?
Uh, the five oh three. This.
Where are?
Actually, actually, the structure is gone on this lot, a, a tree limb.
But there is, five oh three does have currently a structure on it. When everything I looked on Google.
Well, the six forty-four does, but it's not there anymore, a tree limb. It, it was a trailer on the lot, but it's not there anymore, it just, it just crushed it. So Fran got rid of the trailer, so he's got, he's got an empty lot here basically, with utilities, okay?
Okay.
And, uh, you know, the grade break, I mean, the lot, uh, um, the pad's way down here below near the road, so to have the six forty-four, it's, it's, that, that doesn't, doesn't bode well. It's, it's not a good lot at six forty-four. Hey.
There's a, there's a house on the big lot here, the nine point four one. Where it's eight, well, currently it's eight point two.
Yep, yes, sir.
Um, there's also another house on the one nineteen.
Yes. Yep.
And it's the one twenty owns the property.
Right.
And, and I take it one nineteen has a easement?
Yes.
And the, the other property above it doesn't have any easement.
Well.
Because they got road frontage.
It's, it's, it's his, it's his property coming up, so, yeah, he owns all these lots, so.
Yeah, but is the easement part is, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, I mean, was that easement, with that property there?
No, I thought, who's, who's the easement, who owns the easement, the guy here? Uh. Which lot owns the easement?
I'm, I'm assuming.
Seven dash one twenty owns the easement.
Okay, so he owns the easement that goes to.
One nineteen.
Right, all these other lots.
Now, the easement, the easement was created in nineteen seventy, uh, when this other lot was, was also, you know, there's two small lots were created. The second small lot is basically a rock and you can't develop it, okay? So it's been dead since nineteen seventy-two, so that's the line we wanna flip over to create this another, other lot, which fits beautifully geographically, okay, on top of, on top of the hill. Otherwise, this lot, somebody's gonna try to get access up this hill and develop this lot. But that's not gonna, that's not right, you know what I mean? So if you're standing out there in a property, and this really makes great sense. Otherwise, this lot, that, 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 this other lot that he's trying to adjust can never be developed. It's been, you know, it's the yearly tax.
Well, then why, why even have?
Yeah.
We won't, we won't hit, we won't be using that, we'll flop this line over so we have beautiful, you, two, two beautiful useful lots.
What do you mean, this, this is showing a one point oh two acres lot?
This lot.
This not, yeah. We're not showing, this, this is the existing lot right here. Yeah, I'd like to take this and flop it over to make this. Okay, flop this over, flop, flop this line over here.
Okay, so you want to.
Cause this is a dead lot, this is all rock in here.
Right.
He wants to flop this over.
Look, what you're doing is you're subdividing this lot.
Yeah.
We got four lots, we wind up with four lots, no subdivision.
You're taking a hundred percent, you're not doing a lot line.
Okay, then, then I can make it two acres up there, and that's gonna fulfill requirements.
That would.
It's going, it's going to put property above the real need for that lot. Somebody's gonna be going up that hill and putting some, you know, that's all, yeah. We can make it two acres, but it's not.
Well, you have to, right? Yeah, yeah.
But do I have to when all, everything in joining is point two, and it's all tax lots and all, you know, it's a mess down there, it's, as a matter of fact, I spent eleven hours.
Going back, yes, it is a mess.
Sure.
But we're trying to, you know, that's why.
I'm cleaning this up, yeah. It's my specialty.
Regulations were made the way they were to try and clean some of this stuff. I'm still wondering, why do we, why are you sticking with a one point oh two acres?
Yeah, why don't, if this, this is.
If it is even usable or something like.
There's a home on it.
Huh?
No, there's nothing on it.
Or there's, there's a house on it.
Which lot are we talking about?
Okay.
I have the tax map, I have the, the visual.
One nineteen.
Okay.
One nineteen.
One nineteen, does it show a house on there, are you saying it doesn't exist anymore?
There, there's a house on there, yes.
Okay.
That's already a nonconforming lot, it's less than two acres, so what do we, we're not.
But that's been there since nineteen seventy-two, yeah.
Right, we're not changing it.
Why are we talking about that?
We're talking about.
The other non, the other nonconforming lot is what I wanna flop over to make a real lot, this never been used.
Yeah, that's not.
Okay? So eleven never has been. So anything, development, okay, it can't be developed.
Well, uh, uh, you know, Josh has good, this is existing.
Yeah.
So.
That's existing, yeah. Right now. There's a house on it and it's got an easement, it's all set.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's already like that, since my grandfather in.
It's the one eleven and the one twelve that are being affected by it.
You're basically taking from one line and giving it to another lot.
Yeah.
You got three lots.
But owns all four contiguous, you know, outside.
That all sounds great, but we have to go.
Okay, well, I can make it two acres, but it doesn't fit. So you can do something that doesn't fit, okay? But it, but in light of all the two, point two lots all around here, and you saw.
Meaning moving the line up the hill more, so you have that extra acreage.
I would be moving up the, line up the hill, which is not gonna fit with, with the house he's gonna put down right off the road.
There's already a house on the road.
It's, it's been destroyed by, by a branch.
But how does giving that lot more room affect having a house being built on? I'm not understanding that.
The five.
That would, that would be better.
Yeah, we confuse again.
Yeah, so.
Right, so the large one twelve was like, not enough to make.
Here's the property, you wanna put a line here.
Yeah, this lot right here, and that's the rock lot, okay. I'm taking this line and I'm gonna flop it over.
I understand clearly, so if the problem is giving it two acre, two acre lot.
Well, yeah, great break here.
Uh, he's got a, you got a great break in here. Sorry, you can't touch it.
But that's still not legal. Anyway, right around in here, it is a great break. Now, to give this.
It's only one point four one.
This lot right down here has been developed at the roadside with access off of Old State. You've got six forty-four coming up this grade. There's no volume enough for somebody to build up here. They're gonna wanna do it. They're gonna wanna do it, for sure.
Yeah.
Cause this is, this down here is, you know, off the road, it's. That isn't, that's a waste of property up there. It's a total waste of property, beautiful property.
One point one five before.
You got a beautiful view up there, what are you gonna do with that property? Yeah, that's a good way to get to it. We have it right here, across the road, yeah, you have easement, it's perfect.
So you just don't like the idea of angling? The line.
No, I don't like the idea of putting a lot that doesn't proportion property here. And I, I know, I know, I'm not doing the two acres, but I'll do it, Fran.
You don't, listen. First, uh, talk about the process, okay? I know, there's a lot here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give you everybody's time today.
You, you came here for a lot line adjustment.
Yes, sir.
None of this fits our code book for a lot line adjustment.
The two acres?
No, not the two acres, the one acre for a lot line adjustment. It would be shipping the line over from one property to the next, it had to be under one acre. You're, you're totally moving one piece of parcel, parcel to another parcel.
That's what adjustment lines do, adjusted lines do.
No, this isn't, this isn't a line shit. You're literally taking.
Neither of these properties even touch right now. These two properties do not touch.
Those two parcels.
The parcel you're taking away does not touch the parcel it's going to right now.
Doesn't share a line with it.
There's an easement in between it, yes. Okay. There's an access in between it.
Well, the way it's surveyed, showing to us, it does not adjoin with the one twelve. The one eleven, one twelve don't adjoin. You say there's an easement about it, but it's shown to be part of one twenty. The way this is drawn on, uh.
Well, the tax map shows that, too.
The tax map is absolutely wrong.
Okay.
Okay, the deeds don't close. Okay, I cleaned all this up before I worked on it.
Okay, I think.
Yeah.
It's not a lot line adjustment.
Right.
And whatever you're creating has to be two acres.
Not necessarily, cause he can get a variance.
Well, yeah, you can get a variance, and then you have to go to.
Z B A.
The Z B A.
Okay.
Um.
I think that's a little bit.
Why, why not try to shoot for making this two acres?
Yeah.
Well, that's the op, uh, that's the last resort.
I mean, the, the, the parcel one nineteen is existing, you're not changing that.
Correct.
So that's, that's out of the picture, that's, that's there, it isn't moving, it hasn't been changed, even though it's not conforming, that's.
It's there.
By moving this line over, this is land, will be landlocked.
Yeah, are we?
And we don't.
What will be landlocked?
No, it's not that, there's a thirty, forty.
Proposed to?
See, the easement.
All right, let's, all right, go back up on the thirty. You got three parcels here, and you got one easement, and our general code book only allows for two people on a driveway.
One, two, three.
So which two of these three parcels is gonna get the driveway? You can't do it. This would need a pathway out. And then these two people would be sharing the driveway.
Okay, well, if this has road frontage, and this was increased to two acres.
This one's okay.
And this one's fine, okay.
Yeah.
So if the easement came in for these two parcels. You know.
Then it could serve these two, and this one would have to have its own out.
Yeah. Maybe I don't know whether they get road frontage enough to do that, you know, but.
It's only thirty feet.
It's a flag lot already.
How much, how much land do you have on Old State Road here?
What's your, your length of your, this, this frontage?
How much road frontage is here?
You know what that is, the measurement by ten?
You have thirty, so maybe.
It looks like fifty?
You could move that over, and this guy has his own access, and then that easement moved over could just be for those two. You know what I'm saying?
Then it would be the codes.
I don't think he's interested in building another, another driveway up the hill that's.
Well, that, that doesn't matter if he's interested in it, because we can't.
Well, that's, I'm not saying he's, he won't do it, what's gonna happen? If you're not gonna let us adjust, is still do another lot on, 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 on the, on this lot. We'll build a road up there, that's not gonna work as good, but that's gonna pass everything, so.
He's gonna build a road through that lot to get to the other one?
He bought, he bought that property, he's gonna have to utilize it.
Listen for a minute, Kevin, Kevin, okay? Let's not screw guys' land up.
But that's what I'm here for, clean it up the best way possible.
Well, listen, you have enough, it appears that you have enough land here. To put this, uh, is this easement here because there's rocks or something? Because you, you know, the guy's gonna ruin his other property if you do what you just said. So if you can move this over. And if you insist on going to the zoning board, maybe you can have a twenty foot. Easement instead of a thirty foot and then have this guy have access and use that one.
It, it's just a matter of him.
Any of that works. I mean, if, I don't know what this.
The lay of land doesn't really allow that, that you have to work there. We have a beautiful existing.
Doesn't allow the two entrances there at the road?
But we, we got a, they've got a great, we have great access now. We've got thirty foot wide of, 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 of gravel there. It's really a nice, nicely, uh, built road.
Again, you would need, we can't do it, we need a variance.
Well, let's get, let's go to the variance, I guess, whatever, yeah, let's go.
I mean, you, we can't approve something that.
I can go with the two acres, but still to make the variance with the driveway, right?
Right, correct.
So each item needs to be addressed.
Okay. Yeah, so you'd have to get, if you were gonna try and do that, then I don't see much hope. I don't know whether they'd go for. They'd make less than two acres when you can do it, you know.
Is anybody here interested in, in taking the, the one point, one, one fifteen dead lot from nineteen seventy-two that he bought? He can't do anything with it, so this is a problem. It's, it was approved in nineteen seventy-two or whatever.
Well, he's going also.
He bought it, it wasn't approved.
It was an existing lot.
Yeah, and he bought it.
Yeah.
You, you can't.
What can we do with it?
No.
Well, you can merge it like you're going to do.
Yes.
You're basically merging that little lot once you move it from here to there into this.
That would be the end result, but you can't build on it, right? Yeah, I merge it into a big lot.
You should merge it into the big lot.
Yeah. That's the adjustment into the big lot because.
So he, he owns both, he can do that anytime.
Huh?
You can do it now.
He, he doesn't even need to come for us, he wants to combine lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can just go down, have a re-survey, you know, that's that.
Now, you obviously hired me to, to, to execute this, you know.
Yeah, so he doesn't wanna lose a lot.
Hey, does he wanna do a subdivision? No, I can come in here and do a subdivision, huh? And he's gonna pay all those fees and get all the requirements and everything works then?
There's not that much difference between a subdivision cost and requirements than there is with the lot line adjustment. You still need the drawings, you, you still need the surveys, you still.
For you guys, yeah.
No, 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 you still need the, the new deeds, so.
Even for a lot line adjustment.
That's right.
All, all the deeds have to change.
I already wrote them all, yeah.
You know, we often wonder why that was done because it's very similar. So it's not like you're gonna have a whole lot more to do if a subdivision, in fact, sometimes I think the subdivision is.
So subdivision is creating a lot, that's, that's, that's the definition of a subdivision.
You are creating a lot.
Yeah.
You're, you're actually, it's, in my opinion, it's two subdivisions, you're, or you're, all right, it's a one combination and a subdivision.
How many lots is Fran on?
You're combining these two lots and then you're subdividing these two lots. But we have a process we have to go through.
We're adjusting.
Sounds great.
You're subdividing. We start with four, we end with four, how can some, how can it be a subdivision?
We have to go by the code.
Before, you know, we try to work and.
I know.
The easiest way. We're not trying to give you our time.
Okay.
We can't adjust, we don't have the authority to adjust. What we haven't, the authority to do, we've told you, and if you want to get a variance, then you have to go to the zoning board.
And they can adjust.
Possibly, but I'm stuck.
Okay, they can variance, they can give me a variance.
I still think you're gonna do two, wanna see two acres if they're making a lot, you know.
Is there any way that somebody go out and see the site to, to, to make everything make sense to what I'm saying?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, if it works or not, huh?
It, right.
Okay.
You know. It's, you know what, that's the reality.
It's the reality of our day, isn't it?
We have no control over.
I could lie to you, it doesn't make a difference.
I mean, we, we have, we're trying to give you the option to put.
Truth is not really an option these days.
A short driveway in here for the other lot, then you don't have to do any of this. But you don't, you know, for the sake of putting a fifty foot roadway in, you're done.
Is this roadway there already?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's okay, you know. We can't make, you know.
Make it wider.
Yeah, make it wider, so.
And right here, this, this driveway, he's waiting to do it, I mean, it's. Be done tomorrow, I mean, you know.
Well, that's, it has to be done right so the guy doesn't get in trouble.
Well, he knows what he's doing, he's, he's.
Even if, even if he didn't change the drivers now, but he put it on paper.
Yeah.
Then they can do whatever they want for as long as they want and if they subdivide, or I mean, if they sell it down the road and someone says, well, at least they have the option to put their own driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, who, just cause you show it on paper doesn't mean you have to do the driveway. That's your, that's his call, so.
Do you know what you have to do?
Uh, I'm gonna try to get the, um.
A variance.
Variance for.
Okay.
All right.
For the two acres.
Okay.
And the driveway problem.
So then the, the issue with the, what you brought up with the easement goes away or, or with still an easement serving?
For the, there's certainly an easement serving out, that's small.
Well, I don't know how he's gonna redraw this.
He's gonna need a variance for that too.
I mean, the driveway, I think the minimum width was twelve, one, twelve feet.
Yeah.
Of access. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how much road frontage you got here or if he's gonna move that line down and put the easement through this lot. One could have to hold the easement where this lot holds the easement for this guy, this lot can hold the easement for that guy. And, you know, it's.
You don't necessarily have to rip the driveway up down the road if somebody had to sell it, they've got the option to do what they want. But it has to be on paper so that it's gonna work.
So you really, you're going for the variance for the acreage and also the variance for the easement, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Well, he could easily make that a two acre lot, you know.
Well, he, if, if, if the assessment or the easement is coming off of the lot, slot one. He doesn't need a variance because it's only gonna serve these two lots.
Yes.
Where this easement here is gonna serve these two lots.
Correct, yeah.
He's gonna have to create a new easement back to there.
Exactly.
There's plenty of options and ways to do it so that you don't save yourself a lot of, you know, hard front.
So, so, so.
But also the math.
I've got a question. The driveway service is three lots. And how come it can't now? It can't tomorrow?
It's supposed to.
And you're doing, you're redoing it, you're doing a subdivision.
It's not supposed to? Okay.
You want, uh, permission from us to do it, we can't give it to you.
It's already done, it's been done since nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah.
Your three lots serviced by one driveway.
It was commercial then and now it's residential.
Is it grandfathered in?
The commercial zoning, no.
Another layer, we have three lots right now serviced by one driveway.
These would be considered non-conforming lots now.
Now, so they're not, see, he wanted to build the house on that lot, he couldn't do it.
And residential's two acres.
If he wanted to build a house on the empty lot, he couldn't do it?
And what, this small one?
Which one?
No, the one he's trying to get rid of, that's existing.
They could do that.
Existing, you're not changing that.
He could do that then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he could build a house on this lot.
So we're grandfathered in, we have three lots grandfathered in on, on one driveway to be good. And that's good information and I can throw at him, so. But we can't get three lots adjusting until we do.
Right now, when you're saying there's three lots on the easement?
Yes.
But this lot has road frontage.
Yeah.
So that doesn't need an easement.
Huh?
One, two.
And this lot has road frontage.
That's what he's saying, he's.
Are you saying that's wrong?
Okay, we have this lot, this lot and this lot. The big lot, this lot.
Big lot.
And this lot, these three lots right here are serviced by that road right now.
But they have road frontage. So.
What do you mean they have road frontage?
Don't they, don't they border on the road?
They don't need to border on the road, they, they all come off the same driveway coming off the road.
But, but, I mean, it's a driveway, it's not a legal. Anyway.
I don't know, apparently we don't have a map as it exists, if you're telling us this map is wrong.
What's the correct map? Do we have a copy of what it is?
What's it look like then?
I think what you need to show us is a map of what it is because what I'm looking at as a.
This line right here I created.
Is this driveway for this lot is, it goes on to the other lot. It, I mean, again, it's the web mapper, but it shows that the driveway is on this lot for this guy. His driveway comes up through that property. Driveway snakes, it hits, it's on this property, then goes back onto this property, onto that property, oops. And then goes through his to get to that one. My point is, that is probably, hopefully wrong, but we don't see what it is to them, what it's gonna become.
This lot right here, there's access by the, okay.
See what I'm saying, only if you're telling. Nineteen is accessed by, by the, by the right of way and has been since nineteen seventy-two.
The actual road is not even on.
Twenty is accessed by, by, by the access.
It's not even on this.
But even the right of way is not even used.
Is there something in the deeds and whatnot that shows that that's a legal right of way for those lots?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Or that the driveway is even where the right of way is. I think we need to see what it is now and then what it's gonna be. You're showing us what you want it to be, but we have no idea how it's laid out now, where exactly that driveway is. It's right here. This is the existing driveway, okay? And this lot that was here. Serviced by it, and this lot was serviced by it, and this lot was serviced by it in nineteen seventy-two. This one was never built on.
Somebody could've just put a roadway in there, it doesn't mean it's legal.
This was never built on. And these two were. So this is still a live lot, okay? This is the grandfathered in lot right here, he doesn't wanna use it because of the, the difficulty it would be dealing with the road.
Is that where the trailer was?
Huh?
Is, is that the small lot that, that's grandfathered in?
Yeah.
Where the trailer was that the tree fell down on?
Could somebody?
No, that's, that's a lot, that's, that's a lot, it goes off Old State Road, that's the one to the north. Off the road, off, off Old State.
Okay, well, you know what you have to do. But do you, I'm asking a question.
Well, I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go try to get.
So there's no more confusion.
I'm gonna try to get commission from, uh, the zoning board to. To, uh, yeah, make it fly.
Okay.
See if they, see if they have, you know, some more ideas that could help. If, if not, you know, we'll go, who knows what we're gonna do, but eventually he's, he's gonna wanna use that property, it's just too beautiful up there.
Of course he is, but you have to accommodate his needs with what the code is so it can get approved.
And down the road, if there isn't a problem, that they decide to sell.
Yeah.
That's kind of the whole thing here is ten, twenty, thirty years from now, they wanna sell these. And maybe people say, oh, legally, we can get to our property. So. We're not gonna. We're not gonna take a bad situation and make it worse, you know, that's what we're saying.
Well, we got a bad situation right now.
Yes, we do.
But you're here to fix it, not make it work.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, I, I do, I do wanna do that.
Okay.
And thank you for helping, you guys are always right.
You're always right.
No, you are, no, I'm trying to help you out.
No.
I've been around this stuff for a long time, you guys are really good. Well, well, hey, you listen to everything I said. That proves it right there.
We're here for, you know, we're here to.
And I've got forty years' experience, I'm not gonna bring in something that's not gonna work, okay?
Well.
I know all surveyors aren't equal, but I, I'm not gonna do this if it doesn't work, okay?
We don't say it doesn't work, it just doesn't conform the procedures that we have to abide by. Unfortunately, there's a stack of regulations.
That's our problem in this world, huh?
Yes, it is.
Regulations allow things not to work for us.
We're in complete agreement.
Okay, then I'll get back in with, uh.
Okay, Gavin.
With the boss, thank you very much for letting me do it.
All right.
My apologies.
No, do your thing.
Okay. We're gonna have more fun. Okay, you guys here from Emmer and Solar?
We are.
Okay, come on up. For, for the record, if you could introduce yourselves.
Yeah, I'm Garrett Herman, uh, and this is James. Hi, everybody.
James, I'm the last name?
Hi, I'm James Bedrin. Passing in a, a packet here, they'll have my business card in there.
You got a spare?
I do. All right, I'm Brian, so that's for you. Hi, everybody, I'm Brian Barham with C and S Engineers. And I work with, uh, work with Emmer and do civil, uh, environmental consulting for them. All right, so, uh, my name is James Bedrin, I'm a project development manager with Emmer and. I know we just introduced ourselves, but we've got Garrett Herman here and Brian there, just to repeat the names. I've been a project development manager in Solar for about ten years, um, developed dozens of projects across, uh, New York State and across the east coast of the US. Garrett, I'll let you give a little bit of an introduction.
Uh, same a little, just, uh, solar development, uh, you know, from upstate, live on a farm, uh, so understand like the whole small town thing. And, yeah, um, and we just walked the site today. Um, honestly, um, of all the sites I've seen, I never, I really thought there was like a home run site. However, I think this site will be like, hopefully, you guys are seeing it pretty close to it. Um, no U-Shed problems, no landowner, like neighborhood problems, problems. Um, tucked away, hidden, not where we're taking away farmland, um, so all in all, I think it's great.
How big is this?
This is a four point two five megawatt project, um, so.
How many acres?
It's, uh, the fence line will be nineteen point nine acres, so. Uh, so before I jump into the project details, if I could just give a little bit of an overview about Emmer and then I'll jump into the project details. So Emmer and is a global company, uh, we have offices in Asia, uh, Europe and, uh, the US. Uh, we're headquartered in, uh, Norwalk, Connecticut, and we're active across, uh, all of the US. Uh, we develop, uh, community solar, utility scale solar and battery storage projects.
But me and James here just focus on New York primarily.
Yeah, we're primarily focused on New York, uh, specifically community solar. Um, I know you all have probably, um, been introduced to community solar before. So I won't go into a ter, a terrible amount of detail on that unless you would like for me to go back over those details, but, um. You know, essentially, community solar is where we, you know, we build a, um, what we'd consider a solar farm, generally about, uh, anywhere from fifteen to twenty, twenty-five acres. Out on a more remote site, we interconnect to the distribution line of the utility company, uh, feed the power into the lines and then, uh. Customers in New York State can subscribe to what, uh, is called the solar farm and they get, uh. They're, they source their energy from that solar project and they'll get a, um, a credit on their bill. Uh, I'm a community solar subscriber, so, you know, every month I get my power, um, uh, sourced from actually a project that I developed myself in New York State. Um, and usually customers will see about a five percent discount.
Okay, so you're saying that this solar farm is being built for this area?
It's built for the, for Central Hudson, so, uh, customers of Central Hudson in this area can subscribe, will eventually be able to subscribe.
You know, we have three other stores, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only thirty, two hundred people in the town, so.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about community solar, I know you're probably familiar with it, um.
Unfortunately, yes.
Well, I think as Garrett mentioned, um, we hope you'll agree with us and when we think we definitely found a great site. Um, now, community sol, uh, community solar is interesting in a sense that, uh, you know, there takes a lot to source a good project, right? Um, there, there needs to be a lot of, um, uh, checks, checked on the checklist, right? So you've gotta have the right amount of land, it needs to be, uh, close to, uh, the correct, uh, dis, uh, distribution line, near a substation. It needs to pass certain environmental checks, it needs to have certain topography, uh, all sorts of, all sorts of items, right? So there's a finite amount of good solar sites, um, and, you know, I would say that they're probably dwindling at this point.
As you guys know, it's a little oversaturated in New York, like, um, we're well aware, as everyone is. Um, but again, like we said, this is a great site and not only does it, but it also has road frontage, an access road already built in, um, another issue.
You were aware there's another solar company building prior to you.
We were, we.
And you're overlapping on their, their access points.
Yeah, they, so we actually have a, a lease agreement with, uh, Rocktop Farm and, uh, Pete Scully here. Um, the access road is actually on the property that we are, uh, have the lease agreement with, so, uh, we do have the, um. You know, the access already, uh, with.
Did you mean the interconnection access, not the actual physical access?
Interconnection, physical access.
You mean the interconnection?
Right down here.
So they would actually both, as well, but it'd be.
And they had to jump through hoops.
The physical interconnection would be following the same path.
I don't know the exact details, but there was a issue in with the pole placement and everything else down at the end of the road. So.
The invisibility of all that, that was, that was actually a big issue.
So you would add another batch of poles there? You wouldn't use the same poles?
No, yeah, we would have.
So we'd be doubling the amount of poles.
We'd be doubling the visibility issue.
Oh, boy. Not, I mean, it would be three poles at that site, um, again, with spaced apart, so like, saying doubling, I mean, technically, yes, but it's not like you're seeing blah, blah, blah poles right there. They are three, but spaced out down the road.
Yeah, but what about all the transformers, et cetera, that, around them, out there, here at the interconnection?
Of solar systems in a particular.
Uh, well, it comes down to the interconnection that you, well, you know, it comes down to town boards, obviously.
Well, you have to agree with it though, the interconnection, you're.
Yeah, 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 we've already, we've already gotten confirmation from Cent Hod that it's a, a viable interconnection report. Um, so at that point, they've already done their map about what we, what can connect there and out.
Yeah, so our goal today is to introduce the project, you know, introduce ourselves, uh, ask a couple of questions about, you know, uh, next steps and process. And then also, you know, just answer any questions that we can.
Is there, what's the long term, uh, what's the long term, or what am I looking for?
Yeah, so solar farms, solar farms can last anywhere from thirty to forty years, that's the lifespan. And what we'll do is we'll provide a decommissioning plan with a formal application. Yeah, this is a, what we asked for is a pre-application meeting, just like an informal discussion before we actually, you know, submitted everything and started the, the application process. But with our application, we would submit a decommissioning plan that would detail how we would take apart the project. But essentially what we do is we install the project, thirty or forty years later, when it's time for the project to be decommissioned, we'll take apart everything, the panels, the racking, the inverters, even the wiring. We try to recycle what we can and.
At that point, those panels are still, it's not as viable as we think they are, but it is still viable solar panels. And we actually do still use them for future production, like solar panels, it's not that they reach the forty year mark and they're no longer like, they don't produce any power. No, they still produce power, just not to the extent that we would let them.
What's your cost of this project, estimated approximately, I mean, preliminary? What's your total cost and what is being, how much is being subsidized?
Actually, the New York State doesn't have an incentive any longer, the incentive's dried up. So there's no New York State incentive. There is a thirty percent ITC tax credit that we could get from the federal government. With recent legislation, we're not certain if we would be eligible to get that any longer. So, you know, kind of a different world as far as subsidies go at this point. We're looking at a cost of about a dollar sixty-five per watt. I have to do the math and I apologize.
Come on, you don't know the cost of your project, you're coming out in front of us?
It's like going to grocery store, you know what you spent?
Give, give me one second, I just gotta pull out my calculator here.
And then what's the ones before us, you say the twenty, twenty-five years are aged out?
Yeah, we'd be looking at about eight million.
Not in this region, not in this region.
No, they don't last that long.
These would be single access trackers. So let me go over some of those things and tell.
And just so I understand, this is all we have right now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so again, this is, I, I essentially called and, you know, said that we wanted to introduce the project. We wanted to do what we call a pre-application meeting. So this isn't a formal application yet, you know, we intend to make it a formal application.
Did you purchase the property or leased the property yet?
We are going to lease, uh, we are leasing the property, we have a lease.
And what about Incon, have they already been approached as to your possibility going in there? And what kind of animals we've got on the premises?
Sorry, about. She's talking about DEC, environmental conservation, right? So, so a lot of that work, sorry, I'm here at Brian Baran CNS, so we do a lot of their civil and environmental work. Excuse me, we are in the preliminary stages of everything, but we have identified delineated wetlands on site. So that has been done, a lot of times that's sort of a limiting factor where you can and can't build these things. And so we have done that in the site and it actually is really.
The reason I ask is because one of the last things that came before it, it took three years because.
They still don't have it. They still, they still don't have it.
And it's on wetlands, so.
Right.
Well, this definitely is not gonna be Harrier.
That's one of the benefits of being on an existing quarry is that you kind of do avoid a lot.
So if you're talking about grassland birds, northern areas, like that's a whole, you know, it's a little take permits and all kinds of things to make sure, mitigation to make sure you're not impacting grassland birds because they are protected.
All we know about it is.
Is this, is this right here on top of the hill then?
Yeah, so.
And this one's below the hill?
Currently, there's.
Two different elevations?
Yeah, so yeah, let me give a brief overview of the site. So it's located at fourteen, zero seven seven Route nine W. The access road goes off of Route nine W here, goes in about, I want to say just under about a half mile. And then we plan to place the panels, right now there's an existing like skill quarry there. We plan to place the panels within that area. You know, we believe that's part of what makes this a really great solace. I understand there's, you know, been saturation in the area. But this is tucked away, you know, almost about a half mile off the road. There's a lot of existing mature trees here that, you know, will remain to hide the visibility of that project, right? And we've already, as Brian mentioned, we already did a wetland delineation. There's minimal wetland impact. We also did a phase one ESA and found very minimal impacts there. We do still have, you know, additional, you know, survey work and such to do that we would probably start right after this, actually late summer into the fall. But yeah, so this is the project would be kind of tucked away. We are looking at a total footprint of about nineteen point nine acres. That's the fence line impact.
Between the bulk of them, it's only nineteen acres?
Yeah, nineteen point nine acres, that's fair, yeah. And that's, that's one of the questions I had initially had for the board, but I think I already got my answer, but I'm still going to ask it anyway. So the total property is about a hundred and three acres. We're sitting at about nineteen point nine acres. Understand the town has a lot coverage requirement of twenty percent, a maximum twenty percent. So we're just under that twenty percent, which we believe means that we would not require any type of variance. But wanted to confirm that based on our understanding that the lot, the lot coverage would be the fenced area, everything within the fenced area, that we should be good on that.
It would be the array area, not the fenced area.
So even smaller?
Yeah, so then it would be smaller.
The size of the array and your fences beyond, that's not counted.
Okay, so then we're well within the.
Far as I'm concerned. Well, no, no, the coverage is.
All this territory is already cleared.
Essentially, you're just losing some, and we took the walk with our landowner today, he showed us essentially, and he told us, this is all just new growth trees, because this was a heavy pouring.
Yeah, oh, I know.
Oh yeah, so it's literally just small, I don't want to say brush, but you know, new growth trees, it's not like anything.
Well, I've watched some of your prior.
It's already cleared.
Destroyed enough.
Clear a lot of trees. And that's why, exactly, you know, we've been through that, we understand that, and that's why, you know, I actually have to walk this site today, we're like, oh my gosh, like this is.
Being a hundred acres, I don't think they have a problem clearing this shit. No, based on the code.
He'll be over that. He's a landowner underneath that.
Another interesting, you know, piece of information that actually we found out from the landowner is this is listed as wasteland on the tax rolls. So again, I, you know, we truly, I know you hear a lot that this is a great site, but really, we feel that this is a great site, right? We're taking something that's listed as wasteland, you know, making use of it. And, you know, keeping within that.
And how, how is the town gonna have a profit of you coming into us? Other than you applying to the residents to hook up to your, I want to know when you're gonna give the town back in money?
Yeah, yeah, great question, so.
Deal with money.
Yeah, yeah, of course, so there's a couple of things I want to point out. So first of all, solar has very low impact to the town's expenses, right? So it doesn't generate additional traffic, it doesn't generate, so that, you know, it doesn't kids in schools. You know, so there's, it's very low expenses, you know. One of the sayings I've heard a lot is it's the quietest neighbor you'll ever have. So when it's, you know, especially here when it's tucked away about a half mile off the road. But then as far as other benefits go, you already mentioned one of them, but, you know, subscribers can subscribe to the solar farm. They save five to ten percent on their, the supply of their bill, you know, that adds up over time. I think I've saved about sixty dollars over two years. And then lastly, we'll probably seek to enter into a pilot agreement with.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, with Green County IDA, so.
We don't give the town. Yeah, but the town doesn't really get any, much of anything.
We don't.
Yeah, you know, which is another reason.
Oh no, we don't get it.
You have to wonder why.
Well, we got a distrust with Central Hudson and their interconnections, the property across from her place.
Yeah.
Even though we had all the maps, interconnection was going here, and next you know, they're carving a little piece of woods out over here. And so, well, we wanted a second interconnection point.
Taking my trees down like there was no tomorrow.
Never, you know, it wasn't before us, we had no, you know, we go back and we look at what's going on here. They're clearing a lot more land. The solar company that came before you, with the residents, real issue with the poles and got the poles pushed way back.
Yeah.
Trying to be out of the way. You're doing a very long run from down that road to there. Is there any chance of working with Central Hudson, put the, your feed line on there right away?
Yeah, that's there right away, at Central Hudson.
This is much shorter, you do almost less than two thirds of the poles.
Central part here, is this where you're talking about?
Yes.
So that's actually not a.
It's not distribution.
Yeah, so it's not a viable, you know.
But you, when you run.
To put the poles underneath it, just run it under there.
Putting all the poles in, would Central Hudson allow you to put your poles there? Because the substation is expanding and it's directly across the road from that.
Uh, I mean, ten, I don't know, I would have to let James, but then you also have to deal with screen crossing as well, I think that would.
No, no, you go around it, well, you cross it once there, but you span that wires.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, what, what is this?
So it's actually like you saying, what if we just came down there right of that and connected it? Although, and again, just for what it's worth.
Well, I think we like something in carving from Central Hudson before the project starts and time's wasted.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I one hundred percent sure get it.
Frankly, the issue we run into that too is that we, we most likely, once we set a interconnection point with the utility, you can't really change it without withdrawing from Q, reapplying. And unfortunately, what that would do is it would probably completely change the study and also the interconnection cost. We already have, we've got great interconnection results, which is the reason why we're here with you. And we also have an interconnection agreement, a contract with Central Hudson in place already. So at this point, we wouldn't be able to change the interconnection.
But there again, we get, we're back to the neighbors and the visibility of your interconnection point. How, how much equipment is gonna be staring everybody in the face there?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we'd be happy to provide like a viewpoint analysis, I'm sorry, a view shift analysis.
But I mean, on the map, if you do look, and this is a little bit better, they do have the four points already for the four poles. And I mean, as someone who just drove in today, I, you know, I'll give you that, maybe you can see the first pole, but given the other three, I think that's heavily wooded and it's a, it's a nine W, it's a highly trafficked area, it's not like you're.
More and some neighbors that are.
There's neighbors right near them.
We're just asking, how many more poles will there be?
Oh, four, exactly, is that what you can see?
Exactly where those other ones are, where the other ones will be.
They don't know where the other ones are.
Well, we're gonna insist that they're at least where the other poles are, because we can't allow them now to put poles right closer where we just fought them. Yeah, so you're gonna have an issue with pole placement there, is what we're saying.
How, how far back do they?
Have to look, we made them push as far back as they can.
Yeah, I mean.
Under between poles opposed to fifty between poles or something?
It wasn't, it wasn't so much just the poles, it was all equipment, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
The poles is as visible as a bunch of big transformers, etcetera.
They got Central Hudson the, okay.
That's what, and he was actually telling us today, he was like, we actually were, we had the stakes of the other companies.
Oh, good, so are they moved?
Exactly, yeah, we actually, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if they ever changed them, I know we, did they, did you guys ever walk, I don't remember, did they ever get moved after the initial placement or they moved on the maps?
Last time we were there, they had moved and showed us where they were gonna be.
Perfect, okay, so they're like.
And they're putting a lot of their equipment on the ground, so that it's not aerial.
We got maps for that now, the new locations?
We, we reviewed them.
They, they presented.
Uh, that wouldn't be up to us, that would be up to, though, we don't own the property rights, so that's not ours. Again, it's like, if that, that's insurance thing, I mean, it really a little bit lopsided, but I can have a show this point.
Alright, did you have any other questions? That's our biggest concern, I, I think, is the poles.
So do you guys have like a base, just like if we could talk to our Senn Hod or engineers, like, of like what, the minimum, like a hundred fifty feet, a hundred feet, you think is land?
Where can they get copies of those maps?
Let's put it this way, just think of it as visibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just look at, that's what we get kicked back, or push feedback.
Yeah, we can do.
Pushback, pushback. Pushback. Yeah, we, no, no.
Either that or, I remember we wanted a hundred and I think we settled on seventy-five or something like that.
Alistair Moncero's?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we wanted a hundred and thirty, but I think.
You were not, you weren't here when we went to that.
No, but I have the, I have the site plan and everything.
That was the big pushback, was this void, so just.
The final like they.
Yeah, no, that's perfect, and that's like very reasonable for us to accommodate having to, sorry, I was, I was.
Well, it seems kind of.
No, it wasn't easy. You know, Central Hudson, the question is, the question you need to ask is, Central Hudson, how far back can you put the poles? That's what it came down to.
Because according to the previous solar company, Central Hudson was giving them a hard time about pushing it back.
That, that's probably true.
But eventually they did, they made concessions.
We ended up having a meeting out there with Central Hudson with solar, etcetera, you know, which didn't go so well.
No, it did not go well.
Okay, well then, we're gonna move along a few.
Thank you, guys, we have one more question, the other question we have for today was just, the last piece of this is with the upgrades from Central Hudson. They're looking at a completion time of June twenty twenty-nine, so we have the interconnection agreement in place. You know, we have put down our upgrade, a deposit and upgrade payment, we will have the next upgrade payment, the final upgrade payment paid in November of this year. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to kick off permitting towards the end of this year, you know, go through the process, because we'd be looking at construction before that twenty twenty-nine timeframe. We want to see how that works with, if we do, you know, eventually get issued a special use permit, how we could keep that in place for construction, that lines up.
Yeah, we've been down that road too.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get an engineer?
Well, yeah, there's a limit on that, once, once we make, once we accept that.
Oh, they have a year?
Yeah.
They have a year.
They have a year once the site announces.
We, we have a previous project which is, but they're, in their defense, it was environmental.
And do you grant any extensions to that?
We did to some extent, but they're done now.
Run out of that.
And they've invested a lot of money, I feel bad for them.
But in general, though, not for that company, just in general, do you grant extensions?
We're allowed one, I think we're allowed one, one, was it one?
It's one, one year extension, yeah.
So, so if it was approved, you would have it developed for one year and then in general, you could provide one, one year extension to do like in the value, okay. And generally, how long would you expect the process could take to, to get permitted after we apply it, about six months, a year?
Well, so it somewhat depends on you, how you guys move on.
Yeah, I understand, it depends on the process and how, you know, public hearings and, you know, providing all the information you need, but in general, like six months?
I come back in twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, that's a lot, yeah, it's a big project, eight million dollar project, that's big buckaroos there.
Yeah, that's why we want to make sure we time our, our application.
You know, we've been through the extension, so you get one.
Yeah.
So if you got through, it's twenty twenty-five, you got through it by next, say, a year. That's twenty-six, twenty-seven, and you won't have your hookup, Central Hudson's not gonna be ready for you for twenty-nine, you know.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, you're very informative.
We tried to share that, thank you, guys.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
You already have enough.
Hey, I want to get Central Hudson, Central Hudson and Canada together to get out the hell out of our neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, who do we have here with Castle?
Alex, Alex Martin, and we have Lynn also here with us, the property owner.
Oh, okay.
You're up.
Yep, come up and introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Good evening, Gordon.
Yep, your name is?
My name is Alex Martin from Castle and Solar.
Yeah, yeah.
Representing Lynn O'Brack. Yeah, I think, I think that the property's a little bit less problematic, or not problematic, changing.
Have you done it in store?
Yes, we have, yep, yep, worked out, worked out well, looks good. So I'm here to apply for a special use permit for a tier-two ground-mounted solar array. The array that we're proposing is going to be, sorry, thirteen, or nineteen point thirteen kilowatts DC. It's for the purpose of onsite consumption. The array's gonna be located on the south side of the residence. Two hundred and thirty feet from the rear, two hundred and eighty from the north boundary, fifty from the south boundary, and eighty-six from the front boundary. Now, there is a portion of the array that does encroach into the front yard, but our front yard setback is ten feet in excess of the seventy-five that would be required for any ground mounts that are placed in the front yard. The, the array's gonna have a footprint of about eight hundred and forty-six square feet. And we're gonna have a trench running up to the main service panel of the house. There's not a, there's no resting view of the array from any residences nearby. And the parcel is generally well enclosed by trees on, on all sides except Old Kings Road. So the placement of the array, we, there is going to be vantage on Old Kings Road between the southern parcel line through, past the driveway, then the detached garage is really gonna obscure it for the rest of the way up Old Kings Road. We placed it there because we couldn't place it out back because of the septic field. And we didn't want to put it behind the septic field to be affected by the shade from the western tree line. So we placed it in line with the rest of the structures on the property, because if we had placed it on the north end, it would be either too close to the residence or it would be standing out on its own in the field. So we figured that of. Um, so we figured that of the options that we had available to us, that this was going to be, at the very least, the least intrusive for passing views of traffic on Old Kings Road. Um, and then.
What's it about a hundred feet from the well?
From the, oh, from the road?
The well.
Oh, the well, um, yes, I would say, hmm, probably a little bit less, I would say probably, yeah, eighty-five to ninety-five feet approximately. Oh, the well, sorry, I, I was thinking the leach field, yes, I would say that, that that's, that that is about a hundred feet.
Do you have a neighbor off inside here, a house?
Yes, there is a southern neighbor, um, the tree line does obscure it from the neighbor's house. Um, and we.
How tight are they to the?
Um, the neighbor's property, you mean, um, they are, I think that they would. Yes, she is the neighbor's.
Well, you know, I'm kinda getting at is, you know, if we need to do a, you know, public hearing, you know, uh, cause, you know, if we go and put something in this, somebody right across the fence, cause then, what would it look, you know?
Yeah, that's why I showed up.
Site map has to be redone as well.
Well, well, they need a special use.
Well, I don't see any names of the adjacent landowners, I don't see existing easement, I don't see any location of property lines, I couldn't tell you where the property ended and began.
Hmm, I can definitely.
See what I'm saying, there's, there's no reference on here to anything, there's not even a grid is to where it's located.
The parcel view is in that corner for, uh, it's, it's a little small, but it has the, the ownership and outlines. Um, but I can absolutely have that reformatted for greater readability, um, cause it's.
Well, is that, is the rule that it's in a little box on the side or is it on the map that the adjacent landowners are listed? So, like, if I came in here and I was an adjacent property owner, I wanna see where I'm looking at. I mean, that's, we've been a stickler for that.
Um, yeah, I can have that reformatted, no issue, to, to make sure that that information is, uh.
Alright, my question was, I don't know if it's good enough to be in a little box down here.
Yes, yes.
It'll be on the map.
Is it, though?
My point is the residence isn't, isn't here, all the houses aren't here, I have two separate maps and I have to figure it out.
I think that that.
Oh, where'd that come from? Is that part of the site plan?
I don't think that's a part of ours.
That's not for this.
I think you make a valid point and I.
Yeah, I was about to accept that.
No, I'll, I'll gladly have that reformatted, cause I, I don't want it to be.
Well, my point is, would you do a public hearing, someone's gonna come here and wanna see.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that's for the next thing.
Yeah, you're ahead of yourself, Bill.
Um, I did, I was hoping you could check off on the application. Check, did you check site plan as well?
Oh, okay.
Noted that both are happening.
Yes.
That's the only problem I have today. You wish.
One, two, three, no, this is type two. Ground mine has its own, you probably, yeah.
I was gonna give you. Cause there was a little mistake, I already have the check, so this will actually be on the check. Take it, I'm gonna make a note that I gave it to you.
Okay.
So that.
I appreciate it, thank you, I, we got a new guy working, uh, for the, the mail right now, so, I appreciate it.
It's just an extra check, it didn't need to get to me, so you can have it back.
Yeah, I, I will be.
I'm, I'm just curious where this parcel is and like say relevance to this report.
Okay.
I mean, this is north, you know, this is gonna face south, then I guess you are the neighbor, south of this property.
That port of LLC subdivision?
You were here for that?
That's right.
They're on the north side of that.
You can meet regular here at our meetings.
I'm, uh, just knowing the area and especially having the neighbor here.
I, I don't see this.
For record, I don't see.
I don't see this to be any problem, it just matter, we're just trying to make sure we don't.
Yeah, and that's not a problem for me either, I will gladly imagine and add more context.
Yeah, but like you say, it'd be nice to see the, where it falls.
Well, we're gonna get new maps.
Can we, um?
Yeah, it sounds like it's a lot, it's a lot of solar. It's a hundred and what percent of their usage?
This is ninety-nine point five.
I had hammering slide it over to you before.
Plus or minus ten on a kilowatt because it's using the weather.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I always am, I mean, and I see it every day, it's, it's wild how much it swings for like how usage goes. Um, but yeah, so this is, it, this is ninety-five, ninety-nine point five. That's an annual. So, yeah, so it's a overproduction from spring into summer. Um, so that you have that. So, and overall, from, it's total consumption from the last twelve for what the production estimate is for the panels, uh, it's ninety-nine point four.
Isn't that, um, incentive thing going away, the one for one or whatever?
Um, net metering, no, um, net metering is holding strong, thank goodness. Um, but yes, that's just the, just the federal landscape for the, um, tax credit is going away at the end of the year, the thirty percent.
Okay.
Um, which, yes.
Uh, my, my brother has solar panels on his roof, and he was saying something about like, if you didn't do it by the end of this year, that.
Yeah, that's, that's what he was.
The one for one would go away or whatever.
Oh, I don't think so, I, I think net metering is holding strong, um, because the utility companies would have to fight with New York and NYSERDA about the net metering agreements.
Okay.
Um, so thankfully, it's not affected right now. Um, and I don't imagine that it will be because, like I said, the, that agreement is set up with New York State and the utility companies for that.
Right, um, let me just run through this part two short environmental assessment form, and, uh, me, you wanna do that later, you wanna wait till you come back with a?
So, we don't have a next one's gonna bring.
Yeah.
Do as much as we can.
Alright, okay, I'll run through it quick again now, but thank you, man. Will proposed action create a material conflict in the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Proposed action result in change in use or intensity of used land? No. Proposed action appear to character quality of existing community? No. Proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a CEA? No. Proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure, financial, housing, or walkway? No. Proposed action cause an increase in use of energy to facilitate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Proposed action impact existing water supplies, wastewater utilities, etc.? No. Proposed action appear to character quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? No. Proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Proposed action result in increase in potential erosion, flooding, or drainage? No. Proposed action create a hazard to environmental resource or human health? Uh, we hear a motion to, uh.
A motion to accept the part two short environmental assessment form.
Or declare a negative declaration.
That, right, to declare a negative declaration for the, the Casman Solar Scott, see Lynn Brockett.
Okay, do we hear, uh, uh, motion, or I mean, uh, uh, vote on, everybody in favor of, uh, accepting the?
Aye.
Negative, aye, declaration, okay. So, uh, you'll get us a little better?
Yeah.
Map, just so you can place it.
Yep, I'll get you a map that is.
I don't see any issues with it, but you know, just, you can see that, no, no issues, you can help us out.
No problem. Yeah, I'll have the, um, I'll have it zoomed out a little bit, um, I'll have the parcel ownership of the surrounding parcels labeled, and then I'll have the, um, principal and accessory structures on the map for the, um, abutting properties.
And if we, and we can take a vote at the next meeting, if we think there's no issues, we just. Yeah, did we wave it on the last ground, though?
No, that was, but there was a variance for that, that was the, you know, meeting, at least the one I was here for.
I think it's, um, we got the adjacent landowner here, she would come forward, state her name, tell us who she is, that she's the landowner that that joins us, that she's okay with it, and I would then think we could make a motion to not have the public hearing. Can we wrap that all up then?
Yeah, would I?
Well, then, then the next meeting, we could have the resolution ready, you would have the maps ready. Get it done.
Okay, so we want a motion.
If we had, if we had the maps.
To leave?
Well, for the record.
Yeah.
Could you come up for the record?
There's no property owner across the street that would.
This is the list of owners that would have. The last one isn't necessarily.
No, it's a secondary.
People own property next door, don't they wanna be notified that there's a ground mass, so I don't think they can see it, I don't know.
If we're gonna have the meeting next month, I don't see why, is, couldn't it be a public hearing anyway?
We can't even schedule a public hearing, so we have a completed application check, which is next month, month. So then, then public hearing to the file.
Okay.
I am Nancy McCoy, I own the property to the south and to the west of Lynn Brockett, the applicant. And, uh, do not object to this proposed process.
Thank you.
Noted.
Well, bringing up, you, you. Google Maps.
If I was a property owner, I'm just gonna think, if I own property, let's say I'm gonna put a nice house across the street, I don't know if I'm looking at a solar panel, maybe I'm not.
Here's the list of neighbors.
The last one on the list actually doesn't, isn't directly across, it's diagonal across, but I figured if we were having a public hearing, they probably didn't notice.
Well, like I say, it'd be nice, like Bobby said, if we had a, a map to show the lay of land, how it was next door.
Um, would there be any leniency for, for moving for the public hearing? And, cause I can have this reformatted and sent over to April. So it'd be arrived well and ahead of the meeting for anyone that would want to see those plans, if it were a public hearing. Um, just on. Yeah, I'm not pushing, I don't, I don't wanna push for a public hearing, I just, but I just, yeah, I guess, if, if all is the same, I'll take my foot out of my mouth, but I, I just want to be, I just want to be appeasing to see if we could have it accepted. But I don't wanna complicate things.
All I'm saying is setting precedent, is, is, are we just gonna approve every single one of these that come across? At what point is it, is it not public hearing material, or what point is it public hearing material?
We have an application to review?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the application's in there. Site plan, uh, special, special use from the application.
It's all here.
No, it's in here.
It's front and back, so it's only two pages.
Okay.
And then followed by the EAF, part one is in there too.
So, what do you think we're skipping?
Nothing, I, I'm talking about future, at what point is a ground mount solar not gonna be? Skip, at what point do we not, do we skip a public hearing?
Well, why don't we just?
I'm not talking about.
If you get the drawings up.
Wanna, wanna just, wanna go?
Saying we had all the drawings, and everybody was happy, why would we not go?
Okay, well, we could do a public, we could do is accept application, schedule a public hearing.
I'm not trying to give them a hard, I'm just, at what point do we?
I get, I get what you're saying.
Where's the line drawn?
We make a determination.
We did, and I think the last time we did, we said, okay, we were okay with it and went there, so.
Okay, so.
That's why we're aboard, they all think it's a good area, I have not seen the property, so that's my point, it's okay.
Well, why don't we just, uh, take a quick look through the, not much to look at, really? Do we wanna do a motion to accept the resul, uh, the?
Yeah.
Contingent on the ma, contingent on the maps?
Yeah.
And if, and if you want it, we could schedule a public hearing, then they can just move on.
Yeah.
And always with the resolution, we have to have a public hearing next month.
And they only have to notify four property owners in Raleigh, they only need to notify two.
Okay, alright, so let's do that, uh, what do I hear, motion to accept the application for the?
Okay, a motion to accept the, uh, site plan special use permit application for the Lynn Brockett roof mount PV it, array installation.
All in favor? Okay, then we did the EAF, so you're good, and if we could next, uh, you're gonna have to send, uh, okay, notification to the neighbors.
Okay, so just.
You can put it in the paper and, uh, we'll, just for that, could we?
And I'll have the reformatted map in the mail, probably by Tuesday, but I'm gonna aim for Monday.
The main thing is to have it with, have it for the public hearing, you know?
Okay.
We, then we're gonna, all the bases are covered.
Send it to me on email, and I will send you these things in an email Monday, the letters from neighbors and all the owners that you forgot.
Perfect.
You're getting one.
Here's the EAF, we could still get a big screen and everything, here's the EAF.
You literally came in here this afternoon and was like, you gotta put that information up.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll be talking.
Have a good night. Have a good night.
Bye.
One more.
How you doing? Good evening, uh, my name's David Schultz, I'm the property owner at one sixty-one Shiller Park Road.
Yep.
Yeah, I, uh, have been conversing with, uh, Alan, and he suggested that we kind of take our first step towards where a discussion of, of really, really what's going on there and, and, and maybe get some direction on, on where we need to go on this.
Yep.
Um, you guys all got the, the packages I, I sent there, I don't know if you had the time to read through them or not. A little bit on the history of the, or location of the, of the site there, on Sheller Park Road. Right next to the high lines that go through there, right next to the freeway there, and there's another picture of the, of the building, it's a large concrete block structure, ten thousand, about ten thousand square feet or so. Um, long, long history of, uh, of, of, uh, being in the area and being used, uh, for various, uh, commercial purposes there, um, you know, built in the late forties, it's more than sawmill. Lumber for the area was, uh, the shelters for Sheller Park Road, used it, and they, they had the, uh, they built all the, the houses up in the park and, and whatnot from that, made all that stuff, and then in the fifties, they moved west, following the wood, and, uh, you know, it became an excavation and a restructuring company for about ten years or so. Then in the early seventies, uh, served as a trucking terminal, fabrication repair shop. Uh, former site, Stere Trucking, I think is over on, on nine, nine W now, and, and I believe W and W Transmission started out there. Yeah, yeah, and I think, what are your, I'm not sure if it was us or Woody had the, the fab shop there, there, they, they did repairs and fabrication in those places there, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then they moved out ourselves in the, uh, mid-eighties or so, and then, um, uh, Hunter Motor Coach moved in there, and they were a long-term, and they were there from, I believe, eighty-eight until, uh, August of twenty-four. Uh, they moved out and, uh, they moved over into the, um, uh, the IDA complex over on nine W and Cooksack and Trustman, right, it's there. They, they put a building up in there. Uh, so the building, uh, you know, they were there until August of twenty-four there, so, um, so then initially, uh, you know, I guess when zoning came back, uh, came through here, that. Um, so then initially, uh, you know, I guess when zoning came back, uh, came through here, that, that, that property and the neighboring and joining properties next to it were originally, uh, you know, zoned, zoned commercial, uh, kind of an extension of the nine W corridor, were all the commercial property there. Um, and then in two thousand sixteen, I guess the zoning change came through there, uh, kind of consolidate, it looked like to me consolidating some of the commercial zones into one class rather than three or four separate commercial zones. And it took a few of these uh, smaller Jason properties away, unfortunately, my property being one of those that, that became a residential agriculture.
Quite frankly, I think that was an oversight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably was.
You know?
You know, you, you say that, it's funny, because um, in conversations with my father, when the zoning first came through in two thousand eight, the first uh, draft map of that showed it was excluded, and he went to the meeting, they said, oh yes, that was an oversight there, these, these should have been included. And the two thousand nine uh, zoning map, that was actually ratified in part of uh, your law one, I think it's called, or whatever, actually had it as, as red, had it as, had it as commercial. And then I was, I was very, very surprised to find out that it was, uh, you know, I was under the impression that it was still commercial all, all the way through this thing there. Um, yeah, you can see it was just, just the, the lot lying next to the High Line and, and, and the big commercial building there, um, was now made into the RA zone. Um, so, so I guess that's kind of part of the quandary that we're in now, how, how, where we sit with that and whatnot. Um, you know, I, you know, we, you know, it was funny, I, I would have thought that um, there would have been at least notification or some kind of change, there was gonna change in my tax bill, there was gonna change in the classification of the property or anything there, so it was uh, I was very, very surprised when I, you know, I had, I had a conversation with Alan, we started looking, I'm like, oh, oh, would that happen type of thing, so. Um, so uh, you know, we kinda, kinda looked at, you know, what's the way forward, so, so I, I kinda spoke with an architect a bit there to try to understand where we are, how the history of the building affects where we are, where we're going and whatnot. And um, uh, they referred me to the, what they call the International Building Code, it was kind of like most of the jurisdictions use that to quantify the occupancy type of the buildings and whatnot there. And um, you know, over the life cycle of it, it's been an S for storage or an S for factory over the course of the fifty years or so, seventy-five years actually that the building's been around for. Um, so unfortunately, two thousand sixteen zoning change, you know, now made it a non-performing use there, really. Or, or to your point, an oversight that it, better yet, it should be commercial. Um, so, so you know, so that kind of uh, got me into a little bit of a, of an issue here now, um. Uh, so, so, so I guess we, this is where we stand now there, so um, like I said, Hunter Motor Coach moved out on the, in, in, in August of twenty-four, and um, we got a new tenant that moved into a portion of the building, uh, uh, co- cooccupied a building, a local company out in the Baltimore concrete, uh, Coleman Concrete, they do some foundation work and whatnot. And uh, you know, uh, you know, ob- obviously using, it would be considered a type S storage building at that point in time there. Um, so like I said, they moved in in January, and then uh, in June, uh, I kinda came in contact with a carport company at Elka County, uh, down in the city of Kingston, they were currently in a really small uh, small area down in the city of Kingston, and they were looking for some more spots, and some more, more places to spread out and make some safer work environments for folks there. So they came up and looked at that, and uh, they moved in in the beginning, uh, uh, middle of June or so. Um, they were uh, very, very light uh, assembly, and really kinda using it sort of as a kickoff point where they um, get their steel, they bend their trusses and pull the materials together for the package of the carport that they're selling, and then they load them up and go out all over, they, they have a service territory from uh, Maryland up to uh, all the way up into England, up into um, into Maine and, and, and New Hampshire. Uh, they're, uh, so they were, they were really excited to see, they thought it would be, you know, really, really good little site for them, and um, uh, you know, unfortunately, once we started having these conversations about, you know, you might be out of, out of compliance with your, the use of this building and what it's owned, it's not residential agricultural now, um, you know, they had commitments, I mean, they're, they're, they're a sizable company, they're, they're a five million dollar a year company, and they're doing a hundred thousand dollar worth of assembly a week, they couldn't not, you know, say, you know, somebody comes with a red tag, and so they can't work out anything, so. Unfortunately, they relocated their operation back down to the place they moved out of in Kingston.
Yep.
And, and um, just their operation, they still have some equipment still in the building uh, that we have there, just stored, it's not being used there, because they didn't wanna be cut, stopped.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
Well, I was led to believe that there was some, some conditions going on there that weren't uh, weren't favorable.
It's been factory for fifty years.
Well, I think grandfathering plays a good part in.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, you know.
Was it an issue with use or safety? Like, was it not, was it a safety issue, or was it just use?
Well, it came, it came over as a, as a, as a, Alan said that he stopped by, that he was expecting a nearby, um, a nearby uh, uh, property that was having some work on it, and the neighbor asked him what was happening, so they moved over there, you know, he came over there and he said that uh, you know, he, he always thought that there was uh, you know, out of use, and he looked in there and he thought there was code compliance issues added as well. Um, so that's what he kinda said that, you know, it's likely out of use and out of compliance from a code perspective. Um, so, you know, we had both of those things going, and it just put him in a perilous position that he, you know, he, he had commitments, he had to move out and, and continue on doing what he's doing, so. Um, so we uh, so he's currently, he's currently relocated down to Kingston, he got the ambition and want, wanted to come back to this, this area, cause it's a perfectly suited building.
Who said he couldn't be there?
Excuse me?
Who said?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Alan told you he could not be.
Did you get served a letter?
No, no, I did not get served a letter, however, you know, he said, you know, I wanna meet up with you next week, cause we're, we're probably gonna have to walk through the building, it's probably gonna be red tagged. And then, then I, you know, a couple weeks down.
That's totally out of line.
A couple weeks down the road later, he kinda said that again, and we ended up pulling phone tag, and I, I, I had to tell the tenant there that, you know, I, I couldn't do, couldn't be responsible for him losing a hundred thousand dollar worth of business in a week, so I, I said to him, I said, you know, you might wanna, you might wanna keep your options open, you can still go back to the place that you're at, I gave him his rent money back, and, and, and he, and he kinda moved, moved back, um. Uh, but you know, he's still, he, he likes the site, he thinks it'll be really good for him, and he wants to come back and, and, and do that, but he only wants to come back and do that if he's welcome. And Alan said that he did get some complaints from people in the area there, I think people complained because there's change, somebody's different in there, you know, they.
Wait, don't we have a process when someone complains, there's supposed to be in writing?
Unless we have that writing, we're not even.
Yeah, that's the problem.
You know?
Okay. Is this a second?
That, and even if, even if Alan was to give a formal letter, they have time to comply with that letter, comply with the.
And yes, for extensions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I, maybe I overreacted, I just saw the liability of a, a new tenant moving in and, and losing a hundred thousand dollar worth of business and coming knocking on my door in a lawsuit, saying, hey, you know, you've moved into this building, and now it's not suitable, I mean, he, he, he actually, to be honest with you, he moved into it thinking it was a palace compared to the place he was in the city of Kingston, he said, oh, this is, you know, you know, it, it, it's nicely painted, and it's, it's safe for his workers, and not working on the side of the streets anymore in, in an urban area. Anyway, uh, you know, kinda long story short, and that's the situation that we're in, and, and I really like to have a path forward, I think he's great for the community. I mean, bringing a five million dollar worth of business into a bit, here, the collateral goodness that comes, the people fueling up, the, the, the lunches are gonna go to McDonald's and get, and all that stuff, I, I think it's definitely.
Regardless of that, it's, it's the idea that this has been a commercial building.
Absolutely.
For longer than I can remember.
I think this is totally out of standard.
So going forward, we need.
Well, even if it occurred, it should have followed the proper steps.
Going forward, we need to make it so that you don't have to be wondering about this. That's my thoughts on it.
Okay, I mean, quite honestly, I, you know, I, in talking to the, and maybe I should shut up, but anyway, but me talking to the, the, the um, architect that I employ now to find out what was going on there, there are a few things that are probably not up to snuff as, as well as they should be of, um, you know, it's a grandfathered building, so a lot of the code compliant stuff is from a nineteen sixties building there, so that's not a big issue.
Was there any specific issues?
There were a couple things, we talked about exit lighting, you know?
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I had, I had reflective, I had reflective uh, signs.
And not lit.
Lit up, and, and it wasn't, and it wasn't, you know, but looking at the code, I mean.
And that's it, wait, oh, that's what else?
Oh, he talked about potentially there, you know, he, he talked about firewalls and separations and all that stuff, but that, that wouldn't be relevant to an old grandfathered in building.
If you were to change it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you move, uh, renovations, then you would have to.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it was cosmetic renovations to the place, it had a coat of paint on it, you know, I, you know, nothing, nothing of substance, there was no structural changes done to any, anything to speak of there, you know, it was just, you know, cleaning up a building, you have to have a tenant in there for thirty years there, you know? Um, you know, and, and you know, obviously, I let Coleman Concrete know that as well, they're mostly outside uh, with their trucks, they do have tools and stuff stored in the part of the building there. Um, but he said he felt comfortable that if there was gonna be a red tag on the building, that he could grab his stuff real quick and continue on to work, I was gonna let him relocate to another property owner, but it, it got us kind of in a turmoil since this was before the fourth of July.
This is without any letter, without any formal letter.
That's totally, uh, uh, I mean.
Unprofessional.
It's unprofessional, it's almost illegal, okay? You don't, he doesn't have, we, they don't have the authority to do that.
Yeah, we're gonna figure out, we're gonna, the best way forward, and I'm kinda thinking, I wonder if we should uh, we should have a powwow with our attorney.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this is.
Easiest thing to do.
Okay, this has been, the zoning was changed, and I think, as you were saying, it was oversight, but regardless, grandfathering is a legal thing.
Oh, absolutely.
And that, there's always been a commercial business in that, long or long.
I mean, Alan told me I had to come to you and ask about the new tenant coming in there, cause it might be a different tenant that's doing something different, I'm like, well, kind of the, the S-type building, that's why I went to the architectural uh, occupancy type, S-type building is whether it's a trucking outfit, or it's what Coleman's doing, or what these other people are doing, it's, it's, it's commercial there, and he, he, he led me to believe that anytime I got a new tenant in there, I had to come in there and ask who the new tenant was, and I was like, I, it was kind of counterintuitive to me, cause we've had residential, you know, places that we rented before, when the family moved out, I, I put a ad on Facebook and get a new family moved in, and I kinda thought it was similar to that with commercial, but um, you know, the, the, the use of it maybe, uh, I, so, anyway, you know.
It's commercial, right?
Well, unfortunately, it's been taken, taken out of it.
Well, I know, which is probably.
But that's where I need to talk to our attorney about.
Where we put it back in.
With the grandfather, well, that would require a public hearings and all, change in all the zoning. But the fact that it's never been not in use has proven a lot.
Has been modified.
Not been modified.
Has been added on to.
So how, how does the grandfathering factor in this?
I mean, I, I mean, I think the architect talked about, you have a code part within the planning board, or within the planning laws, it talks about a non-performing use there, um, you, although that if you change your non-performing use, it can't be any more non-performing than the prior performance, that seems very subjective, so. It just, it just seemed like, oh, the commercial building where they ran a bunch of trucks out of it, it's a commercial building now where they're running a bunch of pickup trucks out of it, I mean, it just seems.
As long as it doesn't go from commercial to industrial, which, it doesn't sound like it did.
Well, I mean, some like, you know, they're, 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 they're taking a piece of two. Yeah, they're constructing, but they're getting, they're getting a two, two stop, they're getting two stop, and. Yeah, yeah, it, it, yeah.
Okay, well, let's go that route, let's look at commercial and what's, what's listed on it, or.
Actually, yeah, I mean, I think, I think with it, I, I actually printed that out.
Would that cover, would that cover what you're doing?
I, I believe, it, it definitely, it'll, it definitely, in my opinion, covers what, what, what Coleman is doing there, and I think for commercial, it talks about, what do they talk about here in the uh?
New, new table.
They talk about light, light manufacturing, it just says that it's, it's um, yeah, footprinted with a site plan, but then they also talk about a site plan that I really needed, cause it's an existing building that hasn't any tangency outside of it, so it's more just kinda like, it's, it's, it's kinda maybe the, maybe element of site plan, maybe it's more about having the conversation, saying, hey, there's gonna be a light manufacturing going in there versus.
The use of the building maybe.
Yeah, the specific use.
Cause right now it's structural versus. I'm, I'm not sure.
I think it's time, right?
No, it was a bus terminal, it was a bus terminal, and it was a fabricate shop, and it was lumber, I mean, it, it.
It's had, it's had um. So it's had light industrial manufacturing in it since.
Nineteen fifty-nine, a little bit up to the sawmill.
It's, that should also be grandfathered in.
I think you may be internally.
Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, if there's an opportunity to put that back to commercial where it should be, then I'm not gonna be, two years from now, when that tenant moves out, potentially, and another tenant moves in here, I'm here, here in front of you saying.
You know what, or, or we could, you know, if we did, we could uh, do a, a site plan or a use permit in.
Well, I think, I think what I'm saying here is, is required a site plan, a special use permit, but being at the structure and none of that change, you don't require to have a site plan, I think it's needs a special use.
Yeah. Yeah, the one thing I will be completely honest, when the carport people came in there, I think that's probably what got, got uh, Alan's attention, they did put one of their little carports up there, you know, one of those, in two days, or one day they had it up there, cause they had some roll-up doors that they use for the, for the, for the carports and stuff like that, and they wanted to put them under roof there, tucked away nice in the corner of the building, rather than being outside there. So um, the tenant told me that those are considered non-permanent, he says he stole them all over the place with no permit, but I do see in your code that it, it's supposed to, uh, the carport should have gotten a permit, but it's a small enough building, I believe it's fifteen hundred feet.
They have walls and doors and.
It's got walls and doors, but it, but it sits on a.
Yeah, but it's not a sample, right?
He, well, yeah, but he's got some stuff in it, he, he's got some stuff in it though, but I, I believe it says in the um.
It's locked storage, it's a violation. Yeah, there, well, there, there, there's several, the plot map, if we did one, that's similar to what I think you're talking about, and they had to get a permit.
Yeah, no, I, I believe, I believe we, we probably jumped the gun there about not getting a permit, you know, I think he's used to working in, in uh, municipalities where it's considered a non uh, permanent structure, so he didn't need that, and and, you know, after he put it up that same day, I looked on code, and I said, okay, I see you do have a seventy-five dollar.
Unless it's under a certain size, I believe.
I think it was under.
Under a hundred square, it'd be real small, yeah.
Yeah.
So if we talk to the lawyer, then we can figure out what's the best way to do this, so he can run his different businesses.
And, and, and if, would you be agreeable to doing a use permit if, if that clears it all up?
Uh, I think, from what I understanding, is the use permits can have, can have stipulations on them, they could expire, they could do this, could, you know, I mean, I.
They could run with the land, I'm sure.
Yeah, they can, I mean, a, a.
There, there, there just wouldn't be an expiration.
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, that, that I, I would be, I would be, well, I mean, my preference would be to get it back to commercial, cause that, that, I mean, quite honestly, I've already talked to real, commercial real estate agents, and they said that, that, you know, the property's probably worth half its value not being commercial over what it was there, and it took a big hit in my pocket.
The thing is to change, to change, you have to change the town tour.
Yeah, that becomes, I understand that.
That's a long process.
Yeah, but, I mean, ultimately, a special use permit that couldn't be revoked, I'll tell you though, you know, the special use permit is now gonna have to have a public hearing, and there's probably gonna be some folks that are gonna come and say, oh, you know, it was, it's noisier now than it is before, and then, you know, I mean, uh, that, that, that typically would always happen, when there's a new customer.
That doesn't necessarily mean you won't get your permit, so.
Yeah.
We have to have it, a public hearing to give people the opportunity, but that doesn't mean that, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that process, and.
And, and seeing how nobody has put a formal complaint in.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, as we were cleaning up the place and doing some work there, I did have some neighbors come over, and they seemed to be like, friendly, oh, it's nice to see this place getting cleaned up, and what's coming in there, and it's that and everything, but likely they're the people that were snooping and now are saying that, oh, you, we, we used to hear the buses back out with their alarms at three o'clock in the morning, and now.
As a town, it's pretty, uh, it would be ridiculous not to utilize the site.
My thought, is it like, what do you do with legacy buildings that have been around like this forever, you know?
It's such a building setting there is, is not a healthy environment.
Well, yeah, to be honest with you, when it was vacant, I did get a, a, a message from a, a, an individual I went to high school with who lives in the neighborhood, and he said that he sees some cars parked back there, he said, you know, he said, you, you might wanna put cameras up there, I did have cameras, he said, you might wanna put more cameras up there, and you saw the donuts in the parking lot, I mean, the worst thing you could do is have that building vacant, in my opinion, because this is because riffraff and, and all kinds of, god knows what's going on behind there, so I, I, I agree.
It's too close to the thruway to be vacant.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's noisy from the thruway, you know, I could hear all.
Will you give us a little bit of time, and I'll, I'll consult with our town, town attorney.
Uh, so, the biggest thing that you could tell me is that if I, I can tell Coleman Concrete there's no concerns over him being thrown out tomorrow, that he can continue his business, but.
Put it this way, I think there are the issues at that space, you know?
Okay. You know, I mean, I think at some point in time, I, you know, I was afraid to, to.
What could he possibly be doing that's not important?
I don't know, I think he's talking about the life safety, things, the exit, lighted exit signs, and maybe not enough smoke.
So you know what those are, fix those.
Well, yeah, my, my take was that, he led me to believe that you might not be able to do anything on this building, I was not gonna dump more money into a building that I was.
Well, a lighted sign is not a lot of money, I.
Well, when you need to get, yeah, I mean, there's seven exits to this building, and you need to get licensed electricians there to do all the stuff, and, you know, smoke alarm and all that stuff, I mean, there's, what's that? Yeah, yeah, no, I mean.
Yeah, how do we operate it like?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to help you out, you're gonna be very simple fixes.
Yeah, no, no, well.
Unless he gives you a formal letter.
Yeah.
I would continue.
Move forward with the, the non-compliant things there.
We can't vote on it, that's my opinion.
It's gotta be in the record who complained, or filed the complaint.
There is none.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, he also claimed that it's blowing up on Facebook, so I look at Facebook and stuff, and it, it's like people won't be noisy, what's going on there? Oh, I heard you wanted a rental, I heard you was getting this much for whatever stuff.
Oh my God, now we're gonna run the town.
That was my favorite as well, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, I guess, but, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy that it, you know, it seems like reasons coming through here. This is great to hear. So often it's not, you know?
I mean, I, I personally, I think everybody else does, it feels that it's sad, it's, it's even happened.
All right, so what would my next step be? What was my expectation, or your expectation of me?
We'll, we'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
I like to, like I say, I, I really think we should run a by Laura.
Yeah, I think so, too. That way it's...
Get her thoughts on it, you know, and, uh, I mean, grandfathering, because we went to the town acquaintance.
Oh, yeah.
Grandfathering, it, it turned out was a legal thing, some things that they were...
It is a legal thing, because I have a property I grandfather. Yeah, mhm.
So, okay.
Okay, okay, well, I, I'm coming in. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your, uh, your understanding, your, your wanting to solve a problem attitude. It's nice to see, and I would hate, all right, thank you.
Uh, no, if I need to...
Okay, you're in, July tenth, twenty twenty-five rated monthly meeting minutes. A motion to approve.
Thank you.
July tenth, twenty twenty-five rated monthly meeting minutes. All in favor?
Motion carries. One other little tidbit I'm just gonna throw out here is, uh, when the, uh, when the solar stuff, uh, Loadstar is changing owners or something, how, how?
They are leasing the property and the project to another company now. Uh, I did talk to Laura about it, and she thinks that all they would need is owner authorization, and maybe the lease contract provided to us. But the site plan doesn't have to change. Um, the only thing that really would have to change is the building application.
What, decommissioning?
Decommissioning is finished and done. Um, the board approved it, and...
Do we have a copy so we can see it?
I, I don't, no, I don't have a copy.
Okay, well...
I may have a copy, I may have a copy.
The one thing that keeps on going through my mind is, uh, we have, uh, have engineering oversight on it, so...
Yes. There's still escrow accounts.
Okay, so who's gonna be paying the escrow? No, I mean, that's just it. Who's gonna pay the escrow now?
I don't know. I would assume the people who are leasing, you know?
They probably need to come in here and, and...
Well, that's what, somehow, we need to establish, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that means they completely lost the project, or, you know, they're leasing it.
They still own the property, and they own, like, the site plan. They're leasing it for someone else to execute it on the property. So I, from what I hear, they pay more money to lease it to someone else to build it than they would to do it themselves. And that's just talking with random people.
So if the other company is building it, though, are they gonna pay the escrow for the engineering oversight? That's the one thing.
I know there's still money in an escrow right now. I'm not sure how much, because I don't have that information, but...
And that's in the name of Montserrat, right?
Yes, and that's going to continue to be the land.
Do you think we should send a, a letter to Montserrat that, um, inquire as to who's going to maintain that escrow when the project is rolling?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's...
Don't you think it'd be a good idea?
A clarification.
We don't know too much.
Yeah, that's exactly it. We have no idea what's involved in this. And, uh, we're not gonna do another project without engineering oversight. We saw that one before. Okay, um, nothing else? Anybody got anything else?
Motion to close.
Here, here a second?
August fourteenth.
Hold a second, hold a favor?
Oh my God, I'm gonna go out in the warm here.